Parker, Alejo, and Adams appearing via video conference and Supervisor Chair Lopez appearing in person.
Mr. Gerard, do you mind leading us in the pledge? Announcement of the interpreter, please.
Dios, mi nombre es Maria, estoy aquí para los servicios de intérprete en español.
Additions and corrections, clerk?
Yes, there is one correction on consent calendar for Natibidad Medical Center. There is a revised board report received for item number 24.
I would also like to make one more addition to the agenda, and that's going to be an adjournment in memory of, and that's going to be in, done by Supervisor Phillips, in, I'm blanking on the, I'm sorry, Supervisor Phillips, can we unmute your mic and you can give us a little bit about why we're adding that?
Yes, we, we, we lost a grand lady, Shirley LaVerrado, that was a, a giant in the community, and so I'd like to, I collected the information, I'd like to adjourn the meeting in her memory today.
Thank you.
A certain.
With those additions and corrections, I'll entertain a motion to make those changes to today's agenda.
Supervisor Phillips, second.
So I've got a motion and a second, any public comment on those changes and corrections to today's agenda? Any by Zoom? Seeing nobody raising their hand, we will do a roll call vote on that, those changes.
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Parker?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Lopez?
Aye.
Just for the public's sake, we're hosting this meeting obviously in person and also via Zoom. If at any point during today's meeting you'd like to participate and give us a public comment, the way to do that is to raise your hand. Within Zoom, that's in the Participants tab, at the very bottom, you'll see the Raise Hand function. If you're participating by phone, if you punch star nine, that'll also raise your hand and let us know that you wish to speak. I'll then ask the clerk to unmute your microphone and give you the appropriate time to, to make your comments when appropriate. Right now, we're going to head into our consent agenda, our consent calendar. Any supervisors at this point wish to pull an item from consent?
I wish to comment on two items, comment on thirty, six point two and thirty-eight.
Also, Mr. Chair, thirty-six point two on the loan program that I requested, thank you.
Okay. Any members of the public wish to pull an item from today's consent calendar? Seeing nobody in chambers, anybody via Zoom? No hands going up, I'll bring it back to this board, and we'll start with thirty-six point two, and I know that was Supervisor Alejo, so we'll give you first shot at that, Supervisor.
Yeah, I just wanted to, just to speak on this item, because I think it's of community significance. This is a partnership between the City of Salinas and Monterey County to contribute, between both of us, twenty-five thousand each for a total of fifty thousand, but it's a partnership with the Monterey Community, I mean, Community Foundation for Monterey County, and the Pajaros CDC to create a one million dollar loan program targeted towards business owners who do not qualify for the federal SBA and PPP forgivable loan programs that were part of round one and round two of the Federal Cares Act. Undocumented business owners who use I-ten for their business filings do not qualify, and so they have no other recourse. So it was imperative that we step forward and do all we can to help our local small business owners who, who are struggling to get through this crisis. So I think we're the first on the entire Central Coast to create such a program for a very small amount, we're able to leverage funding from the Community Foundation, but also backed by the I-Bank, ninety-five percent guaranteed. So this is going to be a great thing, but it also shows, once again, our leadership and trying to make sure we take care of all sectors of our business community, especially in light that they were intentionally left out of both rounds of federal funding. One million is certainly not enough, but certainly I think we're trying to set the example of trying to think creatively and outside the box to try to help these business owners in need. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I thank all our staff, Anastasia and Carmen Herrera of the Pajaros CDC for bringing this forward and helping us work out the logistics to make this work in partnership with the City of Salinas, once again, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. For those tracking, that was thirty-six point two. Supervisor Adams?
Thank you, yes, I'm fully supportive of this project, I think it's wonderful. The reason that I pulled it is simply for transparency, because we're going to be taking the money from the Cannabis Assignment Fund, and we've made a commitment to ensure that any money taken from that fund would be done under full transparency, so I wanted to bring it forward with thanks to Supervisor Alejo for pulling it together.
Thank you Supervisor Adams, I see Supervisor Parker has her hand raised.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I did, since this has been pulled, I did just want to comment that I do appreciate the local efforts such as this to make sure that truly small businesses, and especially those who don't qualify for anything else, are getting the support that they deserve and need. I will say that the City of Marina also set up a loan fund for small businesses in their community. It's clear that the federal program, some of the money has gone to some businesses that are not very small, so I think having these kinds of local efforts are critical, because we can then tailor them to make sure that they are getting to the people who truly need and deserve them. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Phillips, any comments on this item?
Just briefly, I totally support it, and it certainly is needed in my jurisdiction too, but I appreciate our staff, especially Anastasia, jumping and working on this, and I appreciate Supervisor Alejo taking a big part of the lead on this, so thank you.
I also want to thank Supervisor Alejo for taking the lead on this, it was quite a bit of a charge to get this onto today's agenda, but it is critical for our communities who lack access to the funding streams that most folks might have in our community. The, the difficult thing around a lot of the businesses in our community is that, much like the crisis in two thousand eight, there's not going to be a silver bullet that fixes everybody's problem, it's going to take a lot of small efforts, and I think with the microloan system we set up a week ago, that it's getting, you know, critical, a lot of folks have been critical and said, well, it doesn't quite address this small issue. So we're going to continue to address the issues as we see opportunities to do so, and this is just one more major tool that we're putting in the kit to help Monterey County businesses survive and weather the storm. So again, it has my wholehearted support, and thank you once again Supervisor Alejo. Now we're going to move on to, actually, any public comment on this item, thirty-six point two. Nobody in chambers coming forward, anybody via Zoom? Nobody's raising their hand, we're going to head into item thirty-eight, Supervisor Adams?
Thank you very much, this item deals with proposed speed limit changes to highway, to Carmel Valley Road and Portola Drive, and I wanted to bring it forward at this point, because the speed limit changes on Carmel Valley Road particularly have been in the works for quite some time, and I had planned to have community meetings in both the Toro and the Carmel Valley area to bring these changes forward. Unfortunately, those meetings could not be held, but I wanted to bring them up now, even though the proper time for discussion on these will be when this item is brought forward in open session on May twelfth for the second reading, but I just wanted to take every opportunity that I had to alert the people, both in the Toro region as well as in the Carmel Valley Road area, that we are going to be making some additional changes to the speed limits on those two county roads. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. Any other supervisors wish to comment on this item? Seeing no hands going up, I'm going to take it out to the public, any public comment on this item? Nobody in chambers coming forward, anybody via the Zoom? None, so thank you. I, I do want to briefly speak to thirty-seven as well, which is, is some contracts to allow bridge to go forward. I want to thank staff for continuing to push this effort, I think this, this predates me in, in several ways, and, and I just want to thank staff for continuing to push forward on this project, I know it hasn't been easy, there's been a lot of push and pull with folks around this project, but I'm, I'm happy to see this moving forward in the way that it is, and getting some of those infrastructure investments in South County. Hopefully, as those critical infrastructure pieces get put together, that means people are working in Monterey County, which I'm happy about, so I wanted to acknowledge staff's efforts to move this item forward. And with that, that's all comments I have on the consent calendar, so at this point I'll entertain a motion to move consent.
So moved, Alejo?
Second, Phillips?
I'll take the motion from Alejo and a second from Adams. Roll call vote, please Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Parker?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Lopez?
Aye. We're going to go ahead and head into appointments. We have items three through ten, are there any board members who wish to comment on appointments? Seeing no hands going up, any members of the public? Anybody via Zoom? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for a motion.
Move approval, Parker?
Second, Adams?
Got a motion from Parker and a second from Adams, roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Parker?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Lopez?
Aye. Thank you. Now we're going to head into other board matters, board comments, I'll go district by district, Supervisor Alejo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for your leadership and running these meetings during this crisis, but I want to first of all just really thank all, all our staff who are working behind the scenes, every week, every day that goes by, even on weekends, they're making preparations. When we toured the Monterey Fairgrounds last Friday, it was nice to see the leadership of Michael Dur and his whole team doing, trying to do a really dignified exemplary job for our county residents, and as they said, hopefully we don't have to utilize those fairgrounds, but in case we do have a surge, they prepared some, some, some really, they made preparations that I think would, would serve our county residents in a very dignified manner, so I wanted to give a shout out to them, watching our, our press briefings twice a week, and seeing the wide range of questions that gets asked from our staff. I'm also very pleased with our, all our county staff who have stepped up to answer the public's questions, not, not only our county council and our CAO, but Public Health Director Elsa Jimenez and Dr. Moreno, they get asked a lot of technical questions, and I, I'm pleased that they're, they're knowledgeable and are able to answer the questions to the best of their ability, and that public information is so critical at this time. But also all our other staff, Don Sanqueros, thank you for the hard work they do every week, we, we appreciate it, and I think the work is, is being recognized and, and seen by the community, so thank you, everyone. The only second announcement I would make is, as these days go on, many of our local high school students, I feel bad for them, because it's unknown whether they're going to be able to walk across the stage or enjoy their, the end of their senior year, but I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge that, that, that we feel for them, but hopefully there's a way our local school districts could honor them at a later date, and maybe there are special events also to be held at a later date that are all part of what our high school students look forward to. I know they've recently, a lot of them have been getting their college acceptance letters, and it's good to see the excitement of so many local students being accepted to some great schools and, and really fulfilling a dream for them and their parents and their family members. I participated on one call to welcome all the students that admitted to my alma mater at UC Berkeley last week, and it was just a nice thing to be able to go on Zoom and, and provide that orientation and welcome for local students accepted to that university. But again, I want the community and parents to know that we acknowledge what our students are going through, and their, their fears and, and, and stress of perhaps not enjoying what they, they worked so hard for the last four years to enjoy on their senior year. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Phillips?
Yeah, I, I too had the opportunity to, to peruse the alternate housing site at the fairgrounds, and I was very impressed with what this county was able to be put together and provide a safe place, but respectable face, face, safe place for, hopefully we won't need it, but if we do, and making sure that we do the same things in the other part of the jurisdictions. It's, it's a tough time for everybody, and I know people are working and anxious to get back in a different format than they worked before, but to get back to work. I, I felt especially bad that the loss of some families that we talked about at the end, we'll recognize Shirley LaVerrado, but other people passed away, Elsa Dill, who was a part of the Garen family, Danny Jones, who was a local Prundell guy out here, Marlene Ramsey, Bill Ramsey's wife, passing away, and, and it's a difficult time where they can't say, we can't say goodbye to them the way we traditionally do, and so it's, it's definitely frustrating, it kind of dilutes the loss that we all feel when we can't reach out and, and reach them, so to them, I, I feel too, but thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, we're going to ask Supervisor Parker, she has any comments for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, just a couple of things, my office continues to host a weekly meeting with the mayors in, in my district, and a virtual Hot Topics each week, and partly as a result of the things that I'm hearing through those meetings, I'm submitting a couple of board referrals that I'm sure the CAO will announce at the appropriate time. One is really aimed at stepping up our communications effort on the, on this virus. The public is asking a lot of questions, a lot of the answers are available, our staff has been phenomenal at producing the information, but it's not getting out to the public, and I think it's important to make sure we find the ways to get that out there in more creative ways than maybe we've used in the past, and help us maintain that good spirit of cooperations, cooperation that we've seen in our communities, you know, their compliance with the shelter in place and really doing what we all need to do to stay safe. And the second referral is to ask for weekly progress reports on meeting the governor's six goals for reopening our economy. People need, they need to know what the roadmap is, they need to see the progress, and our county staff is working so hard, you know, twenty-four seven, which is actually a little worrisome to me, it's not really sustainable, but they're working really hard to meet the goals and participate in the planning and really be, have clear guidance when the time comes, so I think we should show the public more of what is happening, and I think it'll help, again, the public understand that their, you know, that their county government staff are working as hard as they possibly can, and that, you know, that there is progress being made to ensure the safety of the community and a gradual resumption of what's going to pass for normal in the, you know, in the coming months or year. So as I always say, be safe and be kind, thanks.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Adams?
Thank you very much Supervisor Chair, this is just such an unusual and odd time for all of us, it really is difficult, and I know each of us has our own concerns and worries. I too just so, am so thankful for the incredibly talented and, and hardworking staff that we have. I had the opportunity to visit the, the fairgrounds twice, once when it was in its nascent stage, as just as the fairgrounds, and then secondly, a week later, after it had been transformed into the alternative housing site, and it really was a phenomenal job to have been done in such a short period of time, and I really just thank everyone that worked so hard, again, twenty-four seven, like my, my colleague Supervisor Parker, I too really worry about the health and well-being of our staff, I worry about my district office staff as well, who are burdening, who are shouldering the burden of so many of the people in the district to call every day and send emails every day with all of the concerns that they're facing and all of the worries that they have and the uncertainties, that's a real strong burden for people to carry, and I acknowledge that throughout all of our district offices and the staff that they have. Following up on Supervisor Phillips' is, comment about the fantastic people that we've lost, this week we lost a man named Tom McCullough over here on our district, he's a very wonderful man, very, very popular person, his dear wife Sherry isn't going to be able to have the kind of closing ceremony that she would need to have as a funeral until this is all past us. So those are, those are some of the things that we're all just feeling here. And then finally, on an upside note, we're going to be having a virtual fireside chat, which we've done every month or so now for quite a while, it's going to be tomorrow, Wednesday, April twenty-ninth at four o'clock, we'll be sending an invitation with a link to anyone who has signed up for my district, for my district newsletter, and then we'll also be putting this up on my Facebook page, Supervisor Mary Adams. So again, that's tomorrow, virtual fireside chat, Wednesday, April twenty-ninth at four o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. I, I'll tag on to what both Supervisor Adams and Supervisor Phillips talked about, which is some of those, you know, key people in our community that we've lost, who we can't properly say goodbye to, and Carmen Valenzuela from Greenfield passed away, and, you know, her family's left a long legacy in the city of Greenfield, and it continues to this day, but again, one of those, one of those folks we've lost in this process that unfortunately we can't say to, goodbye to in an appropriate way, and, and the, my, my heart goes out to the family. I did want to thank Mike Dur for everything that he and his team are doing with the alternative housing sites, they're, they're incredible, and so I want to acknowledge that I was also on that tour, and it was really well put together. I also want to acknowledge the Grower Shipper Association, our ag partners, and our four hospitals coming together to have, find new and innovative ways to reach our hard-to-communicate to populations, which is, a lot of our, our field workers, they're going out and educating in the field now about COVID nineteen, that, that press release came out this weekend, I think that's something we need to acknowledge and really give credit for. I want to encourage our public to continue eating fresh produce, I know there's a, there's a big draw when you walk into a store to look for those non-perishables, but there's a lot of people working to put really healthy food on the shelves every single day, and know that with a lot of our local industry, yes, there's, there's, the, the sour shelves are full, but they're also hurting because that commercial side, the restaurants, the numbers just aren't there right now, and so if you want to support local businesses, buy local fresh produce, that's important, whether that's at a farmer's market or whether it's in your local grocery store, I just want to make sure that, that our folks know that, that's local, that's a way to act local, that it really has an important impact, and on that note, I also want to thank our grocery store clerks, there's some of those unspoken heroes that are out there working every single day, putting, making sure that those shelves are stocked, and, and doing incredible work, and we know that it's not easy for them to get up and go to work every day, knowing that there's a lot of folks coming through those stores, but they put in some great protocols, and they're helping to keep us all safe, healthy, and fed, so I want to recognize our grocery store clerks from throughout Monterey County today. I do have an economic town hall coming up, it's going to be next week, we don't have a date knocked, nailed down yet, but that'll be in partnership with the four Salinas Valley communities, as well as some of our local nonprofits who help advise business, and again, I'm thankful for that new tool that we added to the kit this morning, but we'll be presenting all the tools available to local businesses to help weather this storm. Last week, last Friday, I had the opportunity to participate in the food distribution in Solidad, along with our congressman and several other community groups, helping to feed about twelve hundred people, that was incredible. You know, I, I want to, I know that, I've said a lot about the food banks and their importance to our community, but I want to thank some other key partners that sometimes kind of get overlooked, and that's Creekside Farms in Greenfield, as well as Matsui, who happens to be on Old Stage Road in my district, they're going beyond, it's, it's not just about feeding our stomachs, it's about feeding our souls, and last week at the Friday distribution, Creekside Farms put together flower bouquets of some of their local world famous lavender that's been touted by Oprah and Ellen DeGeneres, and they had them gifted out to our communities at that distribution, it was just that human touch that I think in times of crisis reminds people that they're cared about, and so I want to thank Creekside Farms and Matsui, who's, who's partnering with my office to get orchids out to our community here in light of Mother's Day coming up, and it's that, that food for the soul, which is also important at this time when we talk about physical distancing, but making sure that we're socially connected. So I want to thank all of our staff for their continued efforts, and especially these key partners. I'm going to turn it over now to our CAO for his comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I couldn't say it better than all the board members have so far, just recognizing the tremendous commitment of our community to help each other and, you know, to stand up those services that, that are needed at this time, and of course, especially the, from my perspective, the, the work of many of the county workforce, whether it's the, you know, the daily things that they're continuing to do, because that's part of their job, or stepping outside of their job and helping assist us at this time, there are many, Mike Dur has led a great team in setting up these alternative housing sites, and that includes a lot of county staff who come from, you know, various departments who have volunteered to help in the Emergency Operations Center, as well as helping physically set up some of the, some of the activities at the fairgrounds, Sherwood Hall, and then soon to be in the Salinas Valley Fairgrounds, it's a, it's a lot of work to do and done at a really fast pace, and you see some people out there that you normally see in a suit and tie, pushing around hand carts and, and putting up structures, so I appreciate the work that they're doing, it is a tremendous collaborative effort, and we look, we look forward to seeing Sherwood Hall when it's up, and, and also the Salinas Valley Fairgrounds, Mike, so I think we'll be having some future tours, appreciate that. In addition, I wanted to announce a new referral that came in today, and, sorry, this week, and apologize, I just pulled up the wrong one, from Supervisor Adams to have an update for the board and the community on the, on both the community, county, and community human services and Gathering for Women's progress toward opening a peninsula-based shelter for persons experiencing homelessness, and obviously, this could be, there couldn't be a more appropriate time to bring forward such a referral, so we have, we're happy to assign that out to Department of Social Services to be the lead on responding to that request, Supervisor Adams, and we will get Lori and her team up and running on that as soon as possible. With that, those are the end of my comments, thank you.
Thank you. At this point, we're going to head into general public comments, if you're a member of the public who'd like to comment on items not on today's agenda, this is the time to do so, again, just for, for transparency's sake, if you're in chambers, we'll do that at the microphone, if you're joining us via Zoom, that will be the Raise Hand function available in the Participants tab, if you're on a cell phone or a landline, it is star nine, in order to raise your hand to be recognized and given your time. We will do two minutes, and we have our first speaker here in room, so the microphone is yours.
Good morning, name's Eric Peterson, just two quick things, there've been a lot of accolades today and throughout this crisis for hardworking public employees, and I was just sitting there thinking, the concept of a hardworking public employee is not an unusual concept, the times are unusual, but an awful lot of people who work for government do so because they want to work for government and do a good job, and working hard is nothing unusual for them on a day-to-day basis. Yes, I'm a retired government person, but at the federal level, my daughter currently works for the federal government in the, the nightmare that's a VA hospital in San Francisco, but she burns herself out doing her job, and I, I think we need to recognize that hardworking county employees are not out of the norm. The second thing is last night, Mayor Bruce Ogato of Marina had an online public meeting, which was interrupted by some very offensive things online, and I bring this up, Bruce terminated the meeting, and I bring this up because I hope there is a contingency here if something like that happens here, so either the meeting can be continued somehow, or that can be prevented. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in chambers? Seeing nobody coming forward, anybody via Zoom? Alenny, we're going to go ahead and unmute your microphone, you'll have two minutes to share your comments.
Is the shelter in place going to be extended past May third, so what's, what is the new date going to be?
Okay, thank you for your comment, we appreciate it. Any other members via the Zoom? I have the last three on the, on a landline or a cell phone, nine three zero two, again, nine three zero two, your microphone will now be unmuted.
Hi, my name is Nina Beatty, am I, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, great. Wireless technology is being used unquestioningly by our community and by health officials, and despite the health impacts including to the immune system. Russian health agencies recently released guidelines for distance learning for children, including recommending wired internet connections, not wireless, no use of tablets by under sixteen children, no use of smartphones for educational purposes and time limits for use, and no use by children under six. Our local schools are not aware of these guidelines, and in February, the Institute of Electrical and Electronics Engineers, IEEE, released a study saying that people should be made aware that the EMR from using day-to-day cellular Wi-Fi and Bluetooth devices are harmful to human health. The levels of radiation observed in most cases, such as phone calls, internet browsing on laptops and smartphones, and a range of other wireless devices, including Bluetooth smartwatches, are un- and a range of other wireless devices, including Bluetooth smartwatches, are unsafe compared with radiation limits determined by medical bodies. And they concluded by saying for now, wireless technologies must be avoided as much as possible. Again, this is information that's not being told to the public. This is, these are from engineers who've studied the, both the emissions from different commonly-used device, uh, devices, as well as the medical literature. They said that the electromagnetic radiation emitted out of wireless communication modules in various Internet of Things devices, especially used for healthcare applications, due to their close proximity to the body, have been identified by researchers as biologically hazardous to humans, as well as other living things. And they, throughout their study, not only did they evaluate these devices, but they said that the, they advised preventative and protective measures, and said that.
Thank you, Ms. Beatty. Your, your two minutes are up.
Okay, the public has already been exposed to this without their knowledge. It's important to bring this to their attention.
Thank you very much, Ms. Beatty. Another speakers? Uh, Lipe, Mr. Bill Lipe, your mute microphone now be unmuted. You have two minutes.
Thank you, Chair Lopez. I just want to, I just want to say I hope that this kind of platform is available, ongoing, after all of this is hopefully resolved. I think the ability for the public to comment, either through written comment or via remote, is, would have helped the, helps a lot of folks not have to commute to a meeting. And that, that, that makes it accessible for the entire county and all of its residents to be able to access these meetings, and not just watch them, but also to participate in them. So I would hope the county, not just the county government, but the, also the local agencies throughout Monterey County would keep this platform available going forward, because I think it's important, more so now than ever, for the public to be involved and to remind those that represent us that they do represent us. And, and I think that's very important. I also want to say that, you know, obvious, obviously, the economic carnage going on, not just in our county, but throughout the country and throughout the world, is, it's very hard. It's gonna be very hard on a lot of people. And there's a balance between health objectives, actually, health objective in general is not just about personal health, but also about psychological health. And continuing to shackle up people who wanna, wanna be able to at least resume some sort of normality in a way that respects the guidelines and the social distancing. I think we're all capable as individuals to make the right decision, I believe more so than not. And I would hope that, you know, economic health gets factored in with actual physical health, because the two go together. They're not mutually exclusive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lipe. And that's the end of our speakers via Zoom. One more shot for anybody in chambers. Nobody rushing the microphone. We'll go ahead and close public comment, and head into our schedule matters, which is beginning with a briefing and update on COVID-19, including impacts, action proposals, and plans to address.
Uh, thank you, Chair Lopez and board members. We have six items we'd like to cover for you today. The first is a testing update or update on testing. And I see Elsa Jimenez is on the line here. I don't know if Dr. Moreno is also on the line, but I believe Elsa can speak to that. Number two would be an update on the shelter in place order from either Elsa or Dr. Jimenez. The third item would be an alternate housing site plan, alternate housing site update from Gary Malley, our O E S manager. And then an alternate care site update from Dr. Walls, who I see is on the line here. An update on the Food for Older Americans program from the governor of Lori Medina, our social services director. And I believe Charles is gonna update you and the public on the Hospitality Agriculture Leadership Group discussions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the first item would be the testing update.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Lopez, members of the board, members of the public. I'm Elsa Jimenez, the Director of the Monterey County Health Department, and will be providing an update as introduced by Nick. I wanted to keep reminding us to go to our Monterey County Health Department COVID-19 site, where you will receive the latest statistics, both in terms of cases, tests performed, health officer orders, and other information for the general public. As of April 26th at 11:59 P. M., we have completed 3,076 tests, which about 73% of those are being performed by your Monterey County Public Health Laboratory. And the other tests are performed by other public health laboratories, commercial laboratories, and hospital laboratories. Of those 3,076 tests, we have 185 that have tested positive, which is an increase of two from the prior days of reporting. I wanted to also let you know that all of our four area hospitals are either already processing rapid tests or in the process of finalizing their validation process to begin to perform in-house tests. I understand that hospitals are prioritizing patients that are hospitalized, as well as those individuals who are presenting in the emergency department, who may not have a stable housing to be able to return to once they complete their emergency department visit. They continue to work with our Monterey County Public Health Laboratory to be able to secure testing kits as they are not able to order them directly. I can't stress enough that there still continues to be a shortage of testing materials, both reagents, swabs, et cetera, that need to be in place to be able to appropriately collect and safely collect samples and be able to test it. So it's something that we need to continue to advocate for there to be more materials made available by manufacturers, and then through the federal government, through the state, down to the local government. I do understand that our Governor Newsom will be discussing in more detail at his noon briefing today, California's roadmap to modifying the stay-at-home order. The first indicator in this roadmap is the ability to monitor and protect our communities through testing, contact tracing, isolating, and supporting those who are positive or exposed. One strategy under this indicator is to expand testing capacity throughout California through state-sponsored testing sites, really focusing on those areas in the state that are considered to be testing deserts. Last week, the governor did announce at one of his media briefings that the state's plan is to set up 80 testing sites in local jurisdictions. And currently, the state is finalizing the details of that plan and working with local counties in terms of getting these testing sites up and running. This is really exciting, because it will definitely increase our ability to be able to identify those individuals that currently may be asymptomatic, but the infectious with COVID-19. And that is really one first step in terms of helping to identify who the individuals are that are positive, begin the contact tracing and contact investigation process, which is so vital to managing the current spread of COVID-19, and hopefully helping to prevent further spread of it. And then secondly, Nick asked that I provide a quick update on shelter in place. As we are all aware, our current health officer order is, shelter in place is due to expire May 3rd. Dr. Moreno, as well as other health officers across California, and more importantly, in surrounding counties, are having thoughtful discussions about what may be lifted in the next version of the shelter in place order for each jurisdiction. I think in today's noon briefing, the governor will outline what some of those indicators are that will allow California and to be able to move from stage one, which is the current stage we're in, into stage two. Again, making sure that we are using data to help drive decisions in terms of what restrictions could be lifted, because we want to make sure that we continue to control the spread of COVID-19 and not get into a situation where we may be lifting more restrictions that could potentially expand the spread of COVID-19 in our county. Knowing that every county is in a unique situation in terms of cases, in terms of urban versus rural, capacity, testing capacity, et cetera. Each county's shelter in place order may look slightly different than other counties. And so with that, I'll take any questions if there are, or at the end. I don't know how you want to handle that, Nick.
We'll take questions. At this point, any members of the board have a question? I can't see the screen, so I'm gonna look at the clerk here and see if there's any raised hands. All right, seeing no hands. Any public comment on this? Okay, uh, how many? Okay, so what I'm gonna do is get through the presentations and then take public comment at the end, just to make this a little easier. So if I could, Mr. Malley, if you'll give us the next part of this presentation.
Yeah, thank you. I think it's appropriate. We've heard a lot of accolades for our logistics section, Mike Dur, but I wanted to point out that we have the other section chiefs in the Emergency Operations Center, Fred Claridge, Sean Ellerby, and Pat Moore, and over 100 people in the county are supporting the E O C right now. And like it was stated earlier, they're all working extremely hard. I know Mike deserves a lot of the public face of what we're doing with alternate housing, but there's a lot of people working behind the scenes. And with that, the county's strategy to isolate people that are positive with COVID or at high risk continues. Our first iteration is the Monterey County Fairgrounds, which will open this Friday. And after the staffing at that site will be trained on Thursday. We also have additional sites in the Salinas Valley Fairgrounds and at Sherwood Hall in the city of Salinas, as well as locations around the county for hotels and trailers at San Runza Park, and if additional trailers show up at Laguna Seca Park. Those are progressing nicely. We should be ready to move forward with an opening in the next two weeks on all of those facilities. So our capacity at this point is around 500 people. And once we're fully opened with all the sites, we hope to have a capacity of 800 to 1,000 people that we can isolate that are positive with COVID.
Any questions from board members? Seeing no hands going up, we'll keep moving. Thank you, Mr. Malley.
Thank you. Uh, next, Mr. Chairman, we'd like to hear from Dr. Walls on the status of the alternate care site at the Marina Airport.
Dr. Walls?
This is Craig Walls. Thank you. Not a great deal to add in addition this week. The construction of the Joby Aviation Facility continues. We will be, hopefully this week, cleaning out a nearby unused hangar so we can stage and inventory some of our equipment. And we are keeping track of folks who have come forward to, to volunteer in terms of staffing. Most importantly, the leadership of the four hospitals in the county is going to be getting together on, on Friday to discuss next steps. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Walls.
And next, Mr. Chairman, we'd like to hear Lori Medina, a quick update on the Food for Older Americans.
Director Medina?
Thank you very much. Good morning, Lori Medina, Department of Social Services. So I'm glad to report that the governor has announced a program or framework for senior feeding program. This was announced just this past Friday. A lot of the details are still unfolding about this program. There are a lot of eligibility criteria. The, within our Department of Social Services, Aging and Adult Services will be taking the lead to pull those program requirements together, to do some outreach, to try to ascertain interest for this program. But essentially, this program is for older Americans over the age of 65 who don't have any other way for meal preparation. So it's a, a service that can provide nutritious meals, up to three meals a day for older, for seniors, to have food delivered to them. We already have great partnerships with Meals on Wheels that already have some of these services available. One of the program criteria is that these have to be new programs, new services, that expand the eligibility criteria. There is some, um, um, income requirements, but it's pretty, it's pretty broad. So we will be working with our partners to get this up and running as quickly as possible. I do know that there are some concerns about the, the framework as it has been presented. We're working with the state to get those clarifications so that we can get the program up and running as soon as possible. Today, the program is supposed to sunset by May 10th, but we are hopeful that there will be some extension to that as things evolve statewide, as the governor gives his updates on shelter in place.
Thank you, Ms. Medina. Any questions from board members? I see Supervisor Adams' hand shot up there, so we'll go ahead and unmute you, and you can share your comments.
Thank you, Lori. Just one quick question. Can you tell me if there's any more information about the engagement of the restaurant industry, the, the local restaurants in this program?
Yeah, well, right now, there is one recommended kind of a delivery service that would engage with restaurants. We really have to explore that, because we have to vet these providers and anybody, you know, the drivers or people that would be doing delivery, we would have to do background checks, those types of things. So we are trying to explore that as quickly as possible. I know that the announcement was given that, you know, two-in-one would have information, and other entities would have information. Unfortunately, I think that the announcement came out at the same time that we were actually informed about this program getting off the ground.
Okay, so nothing definitive about restaurants being able to provide the food to get them back on their feet sort of thing? Nothing yet, but maybe?
We're hoping very soon. Yeah, nothing yet, but we're hoping very soon.
Thank you.
I see Supervisor Parker also has her hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, Ms. Medina, I wondered, there's been a lot of interest from the community in this, and I'm sure from restaurants as well. Do you have a point person, an email, a phone number that we can give people if they want to be in touch with you, to see if they can, see if they qualify, or if restaurants want to participate? It might be a different number, I don't know. But it would be so helpful if you had some kind of contact for us.
Yes, Allison Yat, and if people want to contact my office at eight, three, one, seven, five, five, four, four, seven, zero, then I can make sure that we can connect them with Allison.
Thank you.
And last, Mr. Chairman, as you know, there's a significant concern about the COVID impact potentially on the agricultural workforce. There's a lot of work being done with agriculture leadership and the hospitals and the health department. And Charles McKee is gonna give an update on that work. Thank you.
Mr. McKee?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chulos. I will be quick here. But it follows on with obviously Food for Seniors and Food for Older Americans. That food is often provided from right here with our local agricultural community, both, you know, throughout, throughout the county, whether it's the Power Valley or Salinas Valley. There's obviously a lot of, of food products that are produced here locally in Monterey County. With that, obviously comes the influx of additional workers into the agricultural industry, especially at this time of the year. And we are expecting a, a significant increase in our population here locally to help harvest the crops that we grow here in Monterey County. Obviously, a tremendous effort is needed to, every year, to, to provide the food that the salad bowl of the, of the world provides, you know, all those, those fresh vegetables that come out of this area. So we are partnering with entities like the Grower Shipper's Association, the Farm Bureau, and Growers and Inventors Association, as well as many of the agricultural producers, some of the, some of the big farms out there, to make sure that there are appropriate, there's appropriate education, appropriate P P E, personal protective equipment, and hopefully testing eventually for the, for those work, for that workforce, as well as a program to provide housing if any of the agricultural workers become sick with COVID-19. There's a, there are many organizations dedicated to protecting farm workers. And we, we have, we have a couple of different approaches here. One is, is to work, as I said, with the industry associations, and some of the big act producers, as well as some of the nonprofits that are out there, as well, in addition to efforts by members of faculty at U C Berkeley and C S U M B. uh, efforts by, uh, members of, uh, faculty at U C Berkeley and C S U M B, uh, and our county, uh, health clinics to, uh, make sure that we're addressing all the needs of our farm worker community. And, and finally, I, I wanted to note that this builds off of the initial protocols that were being drafted with, with our agricultural commissioners, those, those, uh, industry representatives, uh, as well as Supervisors Aleo and, and Lopez. Uh, those protocols have been, um, uh, updated regularly to make sure that they are on the cutting edge of what is needed for protecting, uh, farm workers and agricultural workers, uh, and have now been modeled, I understand, from many other, uh, agricultural counties and, and also the state, uh, to make sure that we have the, the right, um, uh, processes in place for protecting our farm workers. Uh, finally, the, uh, collaboration between the agriculture community, the county, and our four hospitals is also very vigorous in this regard. Uh, the, the hospitals with the ag community have been going around, uh, providing education to employers and employees in, in this workforce, uh, to recognize best practices to keep their workers safe, uh, at this time with coronavirus, um, uh, so that we don't have a spread within that community. And, and a key aspect of that is that the hospitals working with the health department and our office, or Emergency Operations Center is to recognize when someone needs to be, uh, housed in one of our alternate, uh, shelter sites, and, uh, we respond promptly to make that happen. So, with that, I will, uh, take any questions from the board and, uh, listen to any comments from the public.
Any questions from board members?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, first of all, I wanted, I, I wanted to thank our, our local residents. Uh, last night on Rachel Maddow on MSNBC, a shout-out was given to Salinas' local residents, I should say, but for really displaying a show of support for our farm workers here in the Salinas Valley. So, it was nice to get that national press and showing that people are coming out to show support to these essential workers in our local community. But, um, uh, but I wanted to see, uh, ask, uh, Charles if he could explain this new effort, 'cause I think it's a, it's a model, first, it's kind of effort where now our local hospitals partnering with some of our ag associations, like the growers and shippers, will now, uh, uh, deploy nurses and residency doctors from Activida's, uh, program to go out into the fields and out into the, um, food processing plants, the packing sheds, to educate farm workers about, um, how, how to protect themselves. As we know, we had the forty-one cases of ag workers who have, uh, tested positive. If you could just give some more further details, as I would just announce last Friday, um, I think that's a, a great effort for the community to hear about.
Well, it is, it is a, a great effort, and, uh, you know, I was, uh, kind of at the, the, kind of the thirty-thousand-foot looking-down level at, at that effort, uh, just making sure that we had, uh, right people and processes in place. So, I'm gonna turn it over hopefully to Dr. Gray or Dr. Walls to explain that, uh, uh, part of the program if they can.
Dr. Gray, are you available to fill us in on that program?
Well, I'm not sure he's there, or maybe I'm, maybe he's helping a patient at the moment. Uh, what I could say is exactly as Supervisor Aleo alluded to, that, uh, what they did was recognize that, that, uh, a big effort in, in, in helping prevent the spread of coronavirus is education. And so, the four hospitals teamed up with, uh, uh, the Growers Shippers Association, uh, and, and many of the big, uh, agricultural, um, producers here to put those medical professional experts, uh, in the field, in the, in the, in the, uh, packing, uh, uh, businesses to, uh, educate them on, uh, the best practices, how to keep coronavirus out, how to stop the spread, how to recognize symptoms, uh, what to do, uh, you know, if they suspect that they or one of their coworkers are sick, how to, how to handle it, how to, how to just to address it, uh, within the guise of, of HIPAA confidentiality. Uh, and it was a great collaboration to, uh, recognize that, uh, you know, putting, you know, for one of us standing up there saying what is needed is, is, um, uh, you know, one thing, but, but we, we know from evidence that when a medical professional, uh, gives you the advice about how to protect yourself, uh, that's when people listen. Uh, so we are really happy to see that all four hospitals, especially our own county Nativity Hospital, uh, provide the medical, uh, staff to educate the, uh, agricultural workers, the farm workers, as well as the business owners.
Oh, I, I appreciate our, our hospitals stepping forward to do that, not waiting for the, necessarily for the patients to come to them, but them going to potential wor, to workers to hopefully, um, offset the, 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 the increasing numbers that we're seeing. And I did wanna just, uh, lastly, just thank the Public Health Department and the Ag Commissioners Office, because on top of this program, they're working on some, um, social media ads, um, that are focused on farm workers in Spanish to educate them about how to protect themselves at work and at home. And I, I think that's another great effort that our county is leading on, and that hopefully other counties could follow suit to address the particular needs of our essential ag workforce. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Aleo. Supervisor Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I have, I have two questions, um, for Director, um, the Health Department Director, Elsa Jimenez. Uh, one is kind of a little detail question. Could, do you have a way to tell us, uh, some of the, um, avenues of communication that are occurring between our Health Department and the State Health Department, um, or, or, and, um, the, uh, Office of Emergency Services and the, and the, the State, um, uh, O E S? Are there, like, regular briefings? Are there phone calls? Are there bulletins going out? What, what are the forms of communication that are being used?
Sure, and then maybe Gary or Nick can help answer the question, as I'm only familiar with what I'm familiar with. So, um, the State Department of Public Health does have various, uh, topic-specific, uh, recurring meetings. They have one with healthcare providers, they have one with, uh, local health departments. Um, the Association for Health Directors and Health Officers, um, also have a separate, uh, briefing with the California Department of Public Health. Um, you know, the state is being very thoughtful as they are looking at, for example, the roadmap. Um, they wanted to make sure they, uh, discuss with local health departments what they were thinking, the strategies they were thinking of incorporating. So, the state is, uh, very, uh, open to hearing feedback from local health departments in terms of, uh, policy direction that they're going to be providing, uh, statewide. I understand also that, uh, Cal O E S does have, uh, briefings with elected officials, uh, for the Moak Regions. I think ours are on, uh, we're part of Region Two, and I believe those happen on Mondays at four o'clock. Um, and then maybe, um, Nick or Gary can talk a little bit more about other, uh, state-sponsored calls that are happening.
Uh, the Emergency Operations Center, and specifically our Office of Emergency Services, uh, is in constant communication with the State Office of Emergency Services. I talk to somebody from that, uh, agency on a daily basis. We have organized, uh, briefings with them three times a week, um, where they brief all of the, uh, operational areas in the Northern California, uh, region, Region Two. And we have coordination calls that we brief our local partners, that the state is on to be able to answer questions from our local partners three times a week also. So, the communication is not lacking. We just don't, we don't have enough time in the week to do it more than that. That's, we started out doing it every day, and we had to limit it to three times a week because there was just so many other, uh, conflicting Zoom meetings.
Thank you. Thank you. That's helpful. And then I have a, a more general question. Um, you, you know, we hear from people, um, our constituents, uh, really, uh, asking us that we end the shelter-in-place order. Um, and, um, but even if we were to do that today or tomorrow, um, as I understand it, there, there's a state shelter-in-place order that would still be in place. So, the, um, the requirements wouldn't go away. Um, so, could you just kind of, um, review for the public the, the role, uh, the, uh, kind of, um, what, interlocking role of the state order, um, and the county order?
Sure. So, as you articulated, uh, the governor and our state health officer issue their own stay-at-home executive order and health officer order respectively. Um, local jurisdictions, uh, may develop their own local shelter-in-place order, but it may not be less restrictive than the state stay-at-home order. We can be more restrictive than the stay-at-home, uh, order issued by the, uh, state, but we cannot be less restrictive. So, if a county elects not to issue its own health officer order, then they would follow the, uh, guidance provided by the governor and the state, uh, health officer.
Thank you. And the, and the county order, uh, can take into account, can emphasize certain, um, groups or something that really is, uh, more pertinent to our area?
Correct. Uh, if you were to look at, uh, Dr. Moreno's health officer order and compare it to the Bay Area, uh, health officer orders, which are very similar, you will see that there is greater emphasis in, uh, agriculture and agricultural industry, again, because that is, uh, unique and specific to our jurisdiction.
Thank you.
And then, uh, one more, Supervisor Parker. Um, I understand that we also have twice-a-week Cal O E S, uh, calls with county public information officers as routine, uh, communication.
Thank you. That's helpful, too. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Adams?
Thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation. Um, and I, too, um, have a couple of questions that I think are probably more, um, suited for Elsa. I know that, um, our, uh, shelter-in-place expires, uh, this coming week, uh, May third, I think is the date. Uh, based on what you said, I was going to say, so, what is it gonna be? But I would expect now that we need to hear the governor's, um, presentation at noon before we'll be able to get a clear idea of exactly when, uh, and how our shelter-in-place could be modified. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. We will take guidance from the governor and the state health officer in terms of, uh, what if any restrictions could be, uh, lifted in the local, uh, shelter-in-place orders. As I mentioned previously, uh, we can be more restrictive but not less restrictive. So, we wanna make sure we understand what, uh, the governor and the state health officer are, are thinking in terms of modifying their stay-at-home order to then use as a, as a framework for guiding local decisions, uh, with respect to our local order.
Thank you. I, you know, it is so difficult, as I think everybody is experiencing, uh, because what they may be doing in our neighboring county, we're not doing here. And obviously, we have the shared media, and everybody says, well, if they can do it, how come we can't do it? Those are difficult things for all of us to face. I really worry that we've got a communication gap between what the county is actually doing, all of us, and what the community is hearing. And I think there's a certain amount of, um, sort of willful, uh, uh, you hear what you wanna hear. I know that that plays into it, but I also worry that, um, we perhaps are not getting our message out in the way that could be most helpful to people. And I know we've had that conversation. But we, you know, we're hearing from so many businesses and organizations about how they can start making plans, and many of them are making plans. The hospitality industry has a group that's put together. There are many different groups of people who are working strongly, doing planning, gathering data, so that when it is time to start to emerge, we will have plans ready to move forward. I think, though, that, as I see this, and maybe this is more of a Charles issue than, uh, than, um, than with you, Elsa, I think we have a, a really need for an overarching county approach to this, to how will we go to the next stage? As you were saying, trying to get us from stage one to stage two, I think is going to require an incredible amount of, of, um, of coordination and communication. So, my hope is that as we move forward, we will pull into account these various groups that are working together through the ad hoc committees, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Um, but primarily, how we can ensure that we've got one plan that we're all working from. And I think that's probably the, one of the most important things that we can, that we can be focusing on at this point. But I just thank you so much for everything that you're doing. I do not know how all of you handle it. I, I just really appreciate and value it very, very much. So, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Adams. Uh, are there any other supervisors with comments or questions at this point? Seeing none and hearing none, I'll go ahead and now take it to public comment. Uh, I believe we had, is there anybody in the room? See nobody coming forward. I think we had some folks via Zoom. Again, the, the last three digits on this number are nine-zero-two. Your microphone will now be unmuted, and you'll have two minutes to address this board.
Hi, this is Nina Beatty. Um, I'm hearing a lot about structural steps that are being taken, uh, both at the state level and the local level, but I have not seen any guidelines for how people can stay well, um, in the news media and, and the coverage that's been given. Um, well, how can they stay well, this, whether it's coronavirus, flu virus, pneumonia virus, any of these things? Um, guidelines such as hydration. Um, I thank you to Supervisor Lopez for mentioning fresh, um, produce, um, fresh fruits and vegetables, um, increasing that consumption, especially if they're organic. Um, getting outside, subject to social distancing rules, um, for fresh air, how vital that is, and for sunlight, because that's natural ultraviolet ri, light. And having, uh, the skin exposed, you know, your face, your, your arms, your legs. Um, avoiding sugar, sugar-based drinks, avoiding alcohol, um, supplementing, such as been found in, in various research studies, such as vitamin C, vitamin D three, zinc, to boost the immune system. Um, and, uh, uh, reducing wireless exposure. I don't see any recommendations where the public can take, uh, it pow, be empowered to, other than be afraid, um, distance yourself, you know, uh, and, and all the things we've been hearing on the news, but how can they ca, can, take control over their health? Um, I, um, am concerned when I see recovery rates compared to the other counties, that other counties, people that are infected with coronavirus seem to be recovering at a, a greater rate than in Monterey County. Um, I'm concerned that shelters may be located in areas where there's either radar from airports or cell towers, um, which can impact their ability to recover or survive even. Um, I see treatments being, uh, pioneered in other countries, such as intravenous vitamin C. I'd like to know if we are trying those things in this county to help people recover. And finally, I'd like to see comparisons with other, um, diseases, such as seasonal flu, pneumonia. Um, as far as the death rates, I've seen international statistics that the coronavirus deaths are far lower than many of these things. So, I think it would be helpful for the public to have some perspective, um, on this. And of course, all this impacts, um, our ability, um, to reopen businesses that's so vital for our economy. I particularly am concerned, too, about health of farm workers who have, um, much greater, um, impacts due to crowded housing, um, and the, uh, toxic exposures they encounter in, in, often in the fields. So, they're at even greater risk for health impacts overall. So, those are just some of my comments. Thank you.
We appreciate that. We're gonna go to Mr. Bill Lipe next. He'll have two minutes to address this board.
Thank you, Chair. I would just say that, uh, the tens of thousands of people that flocked to the beaches this past weekend speak volumes about, uh, where people are at and, and, and listening to, uh, edicts and decrees from on high, uh, in Sacramento. Um, you know, this, uh, it, it's good to hear that the county plans are different because it, it seems awfully like that we're actually taking instructions from Sacramento and, and, and the, and the six counties north of us in the Bay Area. Uh, we are a rural county mostly. We have lots of space, lots of separation. Um, and I would just plead with the supervisors, you're the ones that make the policy. It's, it's, uh, it's perfectly understandable to take in all the data and to take in, uh, the health experts, but it seems also like you're not necessarily taking in all the, the economic, uh, data and, and the utter destruction that's going on, not just the business owners, but all the working-class people. I mean, to think that this is gonna be over in a couple of months, the economic damage, I, I, I think you're fooling yourselves. This is gonna be with us for years, perhaps decades. Uh, many people are gonna leave, uh, through just necessity. It's just too expensive to live here. Um, so, you know, I, I would plead with you supervisors, you had almost six weeks to develop a plan on how we emerge from this. And, and it doesn't sound like there's really a plan at all. We're just waiting from, for instructions from the quote-unquote "experts." Um, we were asked six weeks ago, almost, to, to flatten the curb, to stay home. You persuaded, you persuaded most of us, including myself. However, um, we flattened the curb. So, I, I'm not sure why we're continuing forward without some sort of real tangible, uh, uh, points to go forward. Look, it- Look, there will be more people getting sick once we start to reemerge. It's just logic. But I think we're ready to accept that, Chair, to accept that risk. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. And that's it for our members via Zoom. We do have one more person in the room now. Please come forward.
Hi, Jeff Lacharette. I would like to... Supervisor Parker had a good point about the surrounding counties. People are hearing things, and they're wondering why we're not doing things. And as the guy just said, we are a rural county, so I think we're different. You know, it seems like we have been following somewhat of what San Francisco is doing. And here, you know, we have a lot less cases. We're doing a great job. But there are some sectors, I think, that are important to open. One would be normal construction, which they just closed recently, only because I see houses sitting out that are... That have wood, they're not framed, they're exposed to the weather. That actually, over a period of time, could cause such damage that they'd have to be torn down and, you know, partially rebuilt. So I think it's very important to allow construction to continue. They can do it by social distancing. A lot of those smaller homes, usually there's only one subcontractor at a time in the house. They can have those restrictions for people so they can continue on with their remodel or with their house to finish it, get the windows in, get the siding up, continue on. The other thing is that she might have been referencing, too. A lot of people have talked about these golf courses in different communities that are opening all over California. And I think that is actually something exercised for people. These people who work all day, you know, maybe they golfed on the weekend. That gave them some mental health to be able to go out. And that is another place where social distancing can be, you know, accomplished, because you are separated, you're outside, you can do those things. I think it's important. And then one of the last things I think is really important, and maybe it's being done, is that the Restaurant Association is getting a plan for when restaurants can reopen, to be able to create. I talked to some restaurant guys who said, hey, my whole life savings in this thing, you know? I'm ready to lose everything. And if we can open up somehow with doing some outdoor seating and indoor seating, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lacharette. We appreciate your comments at this point. I'm going to bring it back. That was just informational, so we thank everybody for their comments. I'll see if staff wants to respond to any of those points, but I think it was a lot more opinion about where we should head. So seeing nobody raising their hand, we will go ahead and move into our next item, which is an update from Monterey Bay Community Power. Lena Williams is our presenter. I'm assuming that's going to happen via Zoom.
Yes. Good morning, Board Chair and Board Supervisors. This is J.R. Killigrew, the Director of Communications and Energy Programs at Monterey Bay Community Power. I just wanted to appreciate and extend the opportunity that we're here to just give you a quick annual update. In light of what's going on, just from a humanistic standpoint, we do recognize this is an extraordinarily challenging time for everybody. And we do appreciate all the work from the first responders, the healthcare workers, everyone across the county, across the central coast in California, who's really just putting everything forward to make sure that we can flatten the curve. And we definitely appreciate all the leadership that's occurring right now in Monterey County in light of COVID-19. If you'll give me a second, I can pull up my presentation and walk that through. Can everybody see my screen as it stands?
No.
How about now?
Still no.
Okay. How about now?
There we go.
Okay, excellent. Apologies for any of the technology hangups. So as I mentioned, this is an opportunity for MBCP to provide an annual update to our member agencies across the central coast. In particular, here we are with the Monterey County Board of Supervisors. As you folks are well aware, the county of Monterey was at ground zero in terms of helping to develop this agency back in 2017. And this is an opportunity for us to get in front of all of our member agencies on an annual basis to provide an update of where we have been, to where we're going, and just do this as an opportunity to share information. A lot has changed since 2017, in particular, the expansion of Monterey Bay Community Power as a public agency. Most recently, over the last 12 months, we've actually added an additional 13 member agencies across the counties of San Luis Obispo and Santa Barbara. And most recently, actually, the city of Delray Oaks did join Monterey Bay Community Power. And we're actually looking forward to enroll these new communities in early 2021. So we effectively are now an agency of 32 member agencies across the central coast, as opposed to starting from the Monterey Bay region. But we certainly appreciate all of the leadership that came from the Monterey Bay region in terms of galvanizing the advocates, the business community, the agricultural community, to get behind this community choice aggregation agency to bring forth opportunities to accelerate change in the region. I did want to acknowledge and highlight some of the accomplishments. But before that, I did want to recognize Supervisor Jane Parker, who's been a true leader on our policy board since inception, as well as, most recently, County Administrative Officer Charles McKee has been acting as a real voice on our operations board. But in additional, we have a community advisory council that acts as a conduit, as well as an opportunity for us to vet ideas and opportunities about MBCP. And there is a really strong leadership from Monterey County, including Jeff Byron, who is our Chair of the Community Advisory Council, as well as Richard Stedman, who is the Executive Director of the Monterey Bay Air Resources District, as well as Amy Wolf from the Monterey Bay Aquarium, Norm Group, the Executive Director of the Monterey County Farm Bureau, and then additionally, Horacio Amesquita, who is a community organizer in South Monterey County. You know, I think in terms of the accomplishments, we've really been able to deliver on our promise of accelerating economic vitality while really investing in the community. But most importantly is our ability to be fiscally conservative and fiscally responsible. We've already achieved our reserve target. We're actually in the process of pursuing a credit rating, and we hope to achieve that by this fall. And that will allow us to purchase lower energy at the utility scale and deliver those opportunities back to the customers with lower rates. But I did want to highlight a couple of things about local support. First and foremost, not only does Monterey Bay Community Power provide full-time job opportunities for employees, but we're also one of the few programs that actually established a call center in Monterey County, in the city of Monterey, actually, that brought an additional 10 full-time jobs to the region. And with our expansion down to the central coast, we're actually setting up another office in San Luis Obispo. So really looking at making sure we can fit into our JPA goals of providing choice to customers, accelerating economic vitality, supporting local businesses, while also being a truly financially stable agency that can deliver clean energy on behalf of our customer base. I did want to remind folks that in terms of what this community choice energy model is all about is we partner with the investor-owned utility, in this case PG&E. We go out and source the energy on behalf of all of our customers. That gets delivered onto the grid, and then PG&E distributes those electrons throughout the homes through their transmission and distribution network. We source energy through a philosophy that our board has approved, and that is 100% carbon-free. So our default option is a mixture of 34% eligible renewables, that's California in-state renewable energy, mixed with 66% of large hydroelectric from the Pacific Northwest. Now, all utilities are moving forward to achieve the goal of 60% renewable energy in the power mix, and we're fast and swiftly moving towards that. But additionally, we do have a voluntary option where folks can support 100% renewable energy being put onto the grid, and that is MB Prime. And that actually is one, actually eight tenths of a penny more than our default rate. And we have actually had the Monterey Bay Aquarium as one of the big leaders to kind of come out of the gate and join this service offering. And we are starting to see a higher rise in residential and businesses opting up to our MB Prime offering. I did want to provide an update about energy procurement. A lot of the big push for CCAs is about what are you going to do to develop energy projects? And we have been very bullish about developing new renewable energy projects in California. Since our inception, we've actually signed five contracts that are highlighted here throughout the state of California. And we're actually on pace to actually contract for 40% of our energy demand from new renewable energy contracts within the state of California. And I did also want to highlight the fact that we have two MOUs currently with a developer who's looking at potentially developing an offshore wind site in Morro Bay. But most importantly, an MOU with a developer who is looking for utility-scale renewable energy generation within the five counties that we serve. And we also do want to highlight the great success that's happening in the county of Monterey. So for a quick snapshot of the statistics within Monterey County, there's about 44,000 customers. The enrollment's about 93% right now. But I did want to highlight that so far since inception, the county of Monterey, for its municipal operations, has saved well over $100,000 off their energy bills since they started, compared to if they just had PG&E. And additionally, when you look at the entire county of Monterey, both the unincorporated and incorporated communities, you're looking at your collective customer base has saved over $10 million in bill savings compared to if they just had PG&E and this CCA was not in effect and accelerating opportunities. And that translates to over 80,000 metric tons of greenhouse gas emissions reduced. And as I'm honored to be on this agenda, following up about COVID-19 and the response, we did want to highlight that our Board of Directors, both the Policy Board and Operations Board, put together and sought opportunities from staff and unanimously supported a financial relief package that will deploy $22 million back into customers' pockets over the months of May and June. And we're going to do this through reducing all of our electric generation rates for all customers by 50% for the months of May and June. And that, I broke down, that the residential customers will see over $6 million of bill savings in those two months. And in the commercial sector, almost $11 million. And then for the ag customers, about $5 million worth of deferred charges that folks will be able to put that money back in their pockets and hopefully be able to spend that in the community. Finally, I did want to highlight about our energy programs. That's one of our hallmark components of who we are as an agency. We're taking our surplus revenues that we collect from our customers and reinvesting in local energy programs. We're really focused on electrification and fuel switching and resiliency. And we did want to highlight that we launched a really successful EV infrastructure program across our service area right now in the Monterey Bay region. And there actually is $3 million worth of EV infrastructure dollars that will be invested strictly in Monterey County to help increase the fast charging infrastructure that's lacking, as well as the Level 2s. And there actually still is about $400,000 worth of funding available for Level 2. So if the county's still evaluating options to put workplace charging or charging at different sites, that opportunity's still there. And I did also want to highlight that, starting next month, we will be deploying the first-of-its-kind and electrification grant program for housing. So for affordable multi-unit dwelling or market-rate development housing, that's going to be new. We're providing incentives for developers to build all-electric housing, and that's helping to hopefully bring down the cost, but also accelerate for cleaner, safer, and reliable homes in the Monterey Bay region. And one big program that we did want to highlight, unfortunately, with the light of COVID-19, we have kind of run into a really interesting paradigm that we're in right now, which is trying to accelerate opportunities, but in light of this crisis. So we're being very kind of cognizant of the opportunities and being aware of the impacts that COVID-19 is having throughout the region. But we did establish a $25 million fund that's available to support backup power through energy resiliency, and we have allocated $20 million to the public sector. So that could be public hospitals, public water and wastewater districts, any sort of public district, including schools, as well as our member agencies. And that's to help provide low-cost financial support to build backup supply in light of the public safety power shut-off. And then on the private side, we're actually partnering with a bank to set up a loan guarantee program for about $5 million, and that's looking to be launched later on this spring. And that will provide low-cost financing for the private sector to help develop backup supply in light of the public safety power shut-off. And then finally, I'd like to end on a couple of quick highlights that I wanted to share with the board. We are moving towards a unified central coast agency with the inclusion of these 13 new communities. And we are establishing an annual meeting moving forward. Right now, we have it, we're going to be hosting it at the aquarium on September 1st and 2nd. So more information to come as we learn more about how the shelter-in-place will impact gatherings of that size. But I did also want to identify that we have sought preliminary board approval to move our name to Central Coast Community Energy. And that adoption and change to our Joint Powers of Authority agreement will be brought forth at our June Policy Board meeting. And right now, we're working with a brand agency to solicit input from the community. Actually, we released a survey to most of our residential customers and got thousands of responses back. So it's been really nice to hear the community feedback about us evolving from Monterey Bay into central coast. Did also want to highlight that we did open up a satellite office in San Luis Obispo. We're still here rooted in Monterey for our headquarters. That was opened up this month in April. And the last, but certainly not least, we're moving towards a more effective and equitable rate structure in early 2021 that will be able to deliver more savings to our customers through a cost-of-service model. And on that note, I just wanted to highlight, if folks have questions about the impacts of COVID as it relates to their bill, please email us. You can call our call center. Again, we've got 10 staff members who are working remotely right now, but they are in the Monterey Bay region. And we've been doing everything on our power to share information about COVID, both in English and Spanish, whether it's infographics, press releases, FAQs, anything we could do to share the information about what is happening in this crisis and how Monterey Bay Community Power can be a vehicle for information. So on that note, I'm happy to conclude my presentation and take any questions from the Board of Supervisors. And again, I appreciate the opportunity and applaud you for all your amazing work that you're doing around the crisis.
Thank you. I've got a quick question for you. You talked about a 50% deferral in the generation charges, and you refer to it as a reduction and then a deferral. I'm wondering, is that going to be put back on the bill later? That's what a deferral means to me, or is it something that's being forgiven?
Yeah, that's a great point, Chair Lopez. So as it stands, it is a deferral. And over the next 18 months, so well into 2021, we will kind of flatten out that $22 million. We're actually not going to recoup all of it. We're going to recoup some of it from our programs budget, but then also recoup with our rates over time. But no matter what, customers will still be saving less than they would be if they were just paying for a service with PG&E. And actually, we have run models that in 2020, all customers will actually save more money under this model than they would if we just applied our normal discount.
Perfect. Any other members have questions? Seeing no hands going up, we'll take it to the public. We have one person in chambers.
Good morning. Thank you for the excellent presentation and for all the good news about power. My name is Eric Peterson. In the interest of full disclosure, I'm a stockholder in PG&E, and I follow their hijinks rather closely. My reason for being up here is there is some good news out of PG&E. Bill Johnson, the relatively new president, is retiring in a couple of months. And what that means is there will probably be a little less incompetency at the top of PG&E. But just file that in your memory bank. It doesn't detract one bit from the good work you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Seeing nobody else in chambers, do we have any on Zoom? No hands up. Bring it back. And thank you for the presentation, Mr. Killigrew. And at this point, we're going to go ahead and recess our board. We will reconvene in closed session at 12:30. But I see Supervisor Parker's unmuted herself. Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. Before we recess to lunch, I have learned that Edith Johnson recently died, and I would like to see if the board is willing to add an adjourned memory for her today.
So is that a motion, Supervisor Parker?
So move.
Supervisor Phillips, was that a second?
Phillips, second.
Okay. I'll entertain a vote for that. Any public comment on that addition to the agenda? Seeing nobody coming forward to the mic, nobody by Zoom. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Laho?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Parker?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Lopez?
Aye, thank you. And we'll reconvene at 1:30 here in the chambers. Thank you.